We are now streaming live.
We are now?
Yes.
Okay.
Looks like Devin and Emily can see the countdown now. We're getting close. I think we can go ahead and get started. This is Jen Hyman. Donna, can you please mute your microphone?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. And Joel, you can begin.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joel Lynch, and I work with the National Park Service. And I'm here to welcome everybody to a public hearing for the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, portion of this project. We appreciate everybody's interest and are looking forward to your comments on the document that's produced for the NEPA process, which is the Environmental Assessment, or EA, for short. To say the least, this process has been very complex while evaluating two federal actions for the city's proposed UPAR recreation replacement and boundaries adjustments, as well as the federal highway's transportation improvements that result from the city's action related to the Obama Presidential Center. I first want to thank and acknowledge my colleagues who are also present on the phone for this event tonight. And those include folks from the National Park Service, the Federal Highway Administration, the Illinois Department of Transportation, and of course, the city. Each has participated in this NEPA process, and this process has benefited from their professionalism as we work through multiple agency guidance and policy needs while developing the EA or Environmental Assessment documents. As part of the EA or NEPA process, we are currently soliciting comments on the environmental assessments. Agencies are focused on substantial comments related to the EA project alternatives, the impact analysis of the federal actions, as well as the NEPA process itself. I would like to remind everybody that the NEPA process is parallel but separate from the National Historical Preservation Act 106 process. This NEPA meeting process may be initially frustrating for some of those that were involved in that that process, that 106 process, because it is different in that during the stakeholder meetings, we will not be responding directly to individual comments today. This venue is your opportunity to provide your thoughts, your comments about this project while we listen. It is not meant to be disrespectful. It is just a different process. So your comments and input are very important. We want to thank everybody for your continued interest in this project and input to date. All comments are informal, informative, and will be reviewed. Substantial comments provided during the 30-day review process will be responded to and provided to the public in the report with our final decision. So there are multiple ways to which you can participate in the comment process, and that's through the National Park Service's Planning and Environmental Public Comment, or Pepsi website, as we refer to it in shorthand. This is our preferred method to get your comments verbatim into the data system itself. During these webinar sessions, we will be recording the webinar and will transcribe and substantially subsequently enter into our Pepsi system those comments. You can also mail your comments to the Department of Planning and Development, who will share them with the National Park Service. And finally, you can provide them in person at an opportunity at the South Shore Cultural Center, where a court reporter will be available to just transcribe them directly into the Pepsi system. The following presentation will go on into details of the document and comment opportunities and process. And again, I want to thank everyone for attending this evening, and I appreciate the time that you all are taking and look forward to hearing your input.
Thank you, Joel. Next slide, please. This slide is summarizing some of Joel's statements and how you can provide your comments. It is also available on the city's website. Next slide, please. So again, my name is Jennifer Hyman. I will be assisting with the webinar this evening. At this time, guidelines and ground rules for the webinar will be presented. This information was provided to participants in advance of the webinar session. During the public hearing, all attendees will be muted and participant video will be disabled. The chatbot function will also be disabled. Only the host screen will be visible during the webinar. The public hearing includes a viewing of a prerecorded presentation. Following the presentation, an opportunity for public comments will be afforded to individuals who submitted speaking requests in advance of the webinar session. Next slide. The order of public comment participants was determined by the order they were received. During the opportunity for public comments, the moderator will announce the name of the current speaker, and he or she will be permitted to speak by the moderator. If participating on a computer, a screen prompt will allow the participant to unmute his or her microphone. If participating on the phone, a verbal prompt will ask the participant to press *6 to unmute his or her phone. If viewing the webinar or livestream on a computer and calling in for audio features, please mute your computer while speaking to avoid an echo. Next slide. Each participant is asked to provide his or her name and organization. Participants are then given two minutes to provide a comment. The screen will display a visual countdown of time remaining. A buzzer will sound at the end of the two-minute period, at which a 15-second grace period will be afforded to complete the statement. The moderator will then mute the current speaker and announce the next participant. Each participant may speak only once and cannot donate time to another participant. If needed, participants may supplement or complete verbal comments by submitting on the NPS Pepsi website Next slide. Comments will not be responded to as part of the public hearing. All comments provided during the public hearing will be recorded and transcribed for the project record. Substantive comments will be publicly responded to as part of the agency's NEPA determination. Next slide. The public hearing presentation will begin shortly.
The National Park Service, the Federal Highway Administration, the Illinois Department of Transportation, and the City of Chicago welcome you to this public hearing regarding the federal actions in and adjacent to Jackson Park. This presentation is prerecorded and is available on the project website. It will be presented during each public hearing webinar, followed by an opportunity for public comments. Additional details on how you can provide your comments will be discussed at the end of this presentation. This presentation will cover the items listed here. It will begin with a discussion of the purpose of the public hearing. An overview of the federal process and the agencies involved will follow. The federal authority and purpose and need for each federal agency will be summarized. The project alternatives and the impacts of those alternatives will be presented. A summary of the project compliance with other laws will be provided. The presentation will conclude by discussing the next steps of the process. Following the presentation, an opportunity for public comments will be provided. The purpose of this public hearing is to: 1. Provide an overview of the Environmental Assessment, or EA, and federal review; 2. Present the alternatives considered; 3. Present the preferred alternative described in the EA; 4. Describe the next steps of the federal review process; 5. Solicit public comments. An environmental assessment was prepared to determine whether any of the federal actions have the potential to cause significant environmental impacts pursuant to the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. The significance of an impact considers both the context and intensity of the impact. The following slides will describe the need for the federal review process and provide an introduction to the federal agencies involved in the preparation of the EA. The proposed federal actions are in response to the city's decision to allow for the construction of the privately-funded Obama Presidential Center, or OPC, in Jackson Park and the city's improvements to the roadway network in and around Jackson Park. The decision to cite the OPC in Jackson Park, the design of the OPC campus, and the related roadway closures in Jackson Park do not require federal approval or funding. The NPS and the FHWA ensure proposed federal actions meet all federal requirements and environmental laws. The federal review is being conducted jointly by the NPS and the FHWA. As noted previously, the National Park Service administers the UPAR program, and the FHWA administers the Federal Aid Highway Program. Each of these will be discussed later in this presentation. The National Park Service is acting as the lead agency for this NEPA review. The National Park Service and the FHWA will make independent determinations relating to their authority, but both will draw from the same information gathered during the NEPA process. The actions by the city will also require authorizations from the United States Army Corps of Engineers. The authorizations arise due to the proposed discharge of fill material into waters of the United States, requiring a permit under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act, and due to impacts to the Great Lakes Fishery and Ecosystem Restoration, or GLIFER, program. Alterations to the GLIFER project require USACE permission pursuant to Section 14 of the Rivers and Harbors Act, commonly referred to as Section 408. Federal authorities and purpose and need. The proposed OPC project and proposed roadway improvements would impact lands currently managed consistent with the UPAR program. The UPAR program provided grants to economically hard-pressed communities specifically for the rehabilitation of critically-needed recreation areas, facilities, and development of improved recreation programs. The federal government via the UPAR program provided two grants to Jackson Park in 1980 and 1981. As part of the agreements to receive funds, the city committed to maintaining public recreation uses in the UPAR grant boundary, or Section 1010 boundary. The UPAR grant boundary in Jackson Park depicts the entirety of Jackson Park, excluding the existing roadways and the areas occupied by the Museum of Science and Industry and the La Rubita Children's Hospital. The National Park Service reviews any proposed change within the UPAR grant boundary to something other than public recreation use. Any property improved or developed with UPAR grant funds may not be converted to non-recreation uses without the approval of the National Park Service. The purpose of the NPS action is to determine if the city's planned partial conversions meet the requirements of UPAR. In order to amend the UPAR grant agreement, the requirements stipulate that the conversion must, among other criteria, be in accord with the current local park and recreation recovery action program, and assure adequate recreation properties and opportunities of reasonably equivalent usefulness and location are identified. If so, the UPAR agreement may be amended. The need for the NPS action arises from the city's decision to close roadways, authorize the location of the OPC within Jackson Park, and improve the roadway network in and around Jackson Park. The NPS has determined that these city projects would trigger a partial conversion of certain parts of the OPC site and areas of roadway improvements that are currently recreational use to non-recreational uses. The NPS must ensure recreational opportunities of reasonably equivalent usefulness and location are provided to replace the converted areas. The FHWA administers the Federal Aid Highway Program, which makes federal funding available to state departments of transportation and local agencies for roadway projects. In Illinois, all federal aid highway program funds are administered through the Illinois Department of Transportation, or IDOT, through a stewardship and oversight agreement. The Chicago Department of Transportation, or CDOT, proposes to use federal aid highway funding for roadway construction and bicycle and pedestrian improvements within Jackson Park. The purpose of the FHWA federal action is: 1. To address changes in travel patterns resulting from closing roadways in Jackson Park; and 2. To improve bicycle and pedestrian access and circulation. Specifically, the following needs were identified: Poor intersection operations and congestion after roadway closures; Lack of pedestrian grade separations within Jackson Park; and long pedestrian crossings of heavily-traveled multi-lane roadways. The United States Army Corps of Engineers, or USACE, is a cooperating agency as part of this EA. The USACE is not a signatory to this EA, however, the city has requested the USACE grant authorizations pursuant to their federal authority. An authorization under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act is required as a result of proposed discharges of fill material into waters under USACE jurisdiction. The actions that require Section 404 authorizations include: The widening of the 59th Street Bridge abutment to accommodate an additional southbound travel lane along Lake Shore Drive; and: De-watering a portion of the lagoon under Hayes Drive to complete bridge improvements. The USACE also provided federal funds for ecosystem restoration activities in Jackson Park under Section 506 of the Water Resources Development Act of 2000, which is known as the Great Lakes Fishery and Ecosystem Restoration, or GLIFER, program. Certain actions that are part of this EA will impact areas previously restored under the GLIFER project, requiring USACE review under Section 14 of the Rivers and Harbors Act, also known as Section 408. Project Alternatives. The following slides describe the alternatives that were analyzed for the federal review process. The no-action alternative includes the existing conditions in Jackson Park subject to ongoing operation and maintenance. The existing National Park Service UPAR grant boundary is shown here in yellow. Existing roadways remain unchanged. Alternative A is evaluated as a baseline to compare against the action alternatives B and C. To replace recreation opportunities lost by the construction of the OPC, the city has identified a portion of the Midway Plaisance where replacement recreation opportunities will be developed. The NPS action is to determine whether the city's proposed replacement of recreation opportunities lost due to the OPC are adequate, and to modify the UPAR boundary. If the National Park Service approves the partial conversion, the city's proposed roadway closures would be implemented, and the OPC would be constructed, and the UPAR agreement and boundaries would be amended to include a portion of the Midway Plaisance with replacement recreational opportunities provided. This condition, as shown in this slide, also represents the FHWA no-build alternative to compare impacts of proposed transportation actions. Alternative C is the same UPAR replacement as alternative B and adds transportation improvements to mitigate traffic congestion as a result of roadway closures in Jackson Park. This alternative also increases continuity between existing park areas with proposed trails and underpasses for improved pedestrian and bicyclist access and circulation. Under alternative C, NPS would also evaluate and approve the conversion of UPAR recreation land caused by roadway improvements in exchange for replacement recreation opportunities where existing roads are converted to park space. The FHWA action only occurs if the National Park Service approves the conversion of recreational use by the OPC, the city closes roadways, and the OPC is constructed in Jackson Park. The FHWA evaluates the impacts of transportation improvements, as shown here. Under this alternative, more parkland will be taken from recreation use for roadway improvements, resulting in further partial conversion. The National Park Service would evaluate the conversion of UPAR recreation land taken for roadway improvements, and will review the adequacy of replacement land and recreational opportunities offered by developing the closed road corridors as parkland. Impacts of Alternatives. For the analysis of impacts by the alternatives, environmental resources were identified. In keeping with NEPA guidance, the environmental assessment discussion focuses on key issues. Specifically, issues are retained for detailed study of impacts if they may be substantial, if they are of critical importance for decision-making, if they are expected to have different impacts across alternatives, or if the results of the study are expected to be scientifically contentious. Certain environmental resource topics were dismissed from further analysis as they do not meet the described criteria. The topics dismissed include: Agricultural resources; Special status species; Other wildlife and wildlife species; Air quality; Water resources; Highway traffic noise; Archaeological resources; and Construction noise associated with the OPC. Further details regarding the dismissal of each topic are provided in the EA. The impact topics that were carried forward for further analysis include: Recreation; Traffic congestion; Cultural resources; Social and economic issues; and the Great Lakes Fishery and Ecosystem Restoration, or GLIFER. The analysis of recreation as an impact topic includes describing the change of the UPAR boundary under each alternative, as well as the change in recreational uses and opportunities that would result from loss due to the OPC. Impacts of Alternative A. Under Alternative A, recreation within Jackson Park and the Midway Plaisance would continue under the current city ownership and management by the Chicago Park District. There would be no change to the UPAR boundary or recreation uses under this alternative. Impacts of Alternative B. The partial conversion of the area around the proposed OPC buildings in Jackson Park would result in lifting the existing UPAR requirements for recreation from a 4.6-acre parcel within the OPC site. UPAR restrictions would then be placed on the 5.2-acre site on the east end of the Midway Plaisance. The OPC site currently includes open space with paths that are used for walking or running, a track that is used for exercise, running and walking, and an artificial turf field bounded by the track, which is used for playing football and soccer. The site also includes open picnic grove space that can be reserved by applying for a permit, a memorial garden, known as the perennial or women's garden, and a portion of the 62nd Street playground. At the OPC site, recreation elements would be reconfigured. Lost UPAR recreational opportunities here include the track and field, the picnic grove, and the open recreation space, including biking and walking trails. The UPAR recreation opportunities lost due to the OPC site, which are the track, picnic grove, and open space, would be replaced. The track would be replaced in a new location in Jackson Park. Several picnicking opportunities would be available across the larger OPC campus. Remaining recreation spaces shown would be relocated within Jackson Park, but are independent of the UPAR conversion. The function of the 62nd Street playground would be relocated and expanded to the immediate northwest of the current location. The perennial or women's garden would be temporarily impacted by construction, but upon completion of the OPC site development, existing features of the women's garden will be replaced with a new design of equivalent size and improved accessibility. Opportunities for informal recreation would be created through new landscaped areas made available by the closure of roads on the site. To replace lost UPAR recreational opportunities, the city proposes modifying the east end of the Midway Plaisance to accommodate a combination of play area and open space. The majority of the east end of the Midway Plaisance is an open lawn lined with trees. This area has two mixed-use trails and a sidewalk. Within the open space are park benches, trees, an informational kiosk, the Cheney Good Memorial, and a wetland. The open space allows for informal recreation such as pickup games, walking, gathering, or open play. Sidewalks provide opportunities for walking and biking. Within the east end of the Midway Plaisance, the western side of the lawn would be altered with the addition of play area that would include both inclusive play and nature play facilities. New structural features would result in the loss of some open recreational space. However, the city proposes modifications to improve the recreational utility of this area. The sunken grade of the lawn area would be modified to facilitate infiltration and drainage to remove the wetland and to enhance the use of the open field. The proposed flexible open space on the site would accommodate a variety of activities, such as dog walking, picnicking, and holding soccer practice. The city also proposes to reinstall a missing historic walk and restore historic tree patterns on the site with the goal of rehabilitating historic spatial organization to a historically open character with corner plantings. There will be no alterations to the configuration of existing roadways or walking paths. Impacts of Alternative C. In addition to the recreation impacts of Alternative B, the analysis of Alternative C evaluates the incremental impacts to recreation changes as a result of the transportation improvements. The planned roadway changes would result in lost park space where roads would be widened or improved, and new recreational space where roads are closed and converted to park space. The areas of Jackson Park that are currently parkland within the UPAR boundary, but that would become roadways or sidewalks, generally consist of sidewalks, walkways, open space, or landscaping that serves as buffer zones for roadways and/or areas for informal recreation. The planned roadway widening and improvements would result in lost open park spaces used for informal recreation, as well as some sidewalks and pathways used for walking, jogging, and biking. These spaces are linear, narrow, and mainly serve as landscape buffer space between roadways and more functional recreation areas nearby. The conversion of these areas to transportation use would not prevent park users from continuing to use the adjacent open areas of the park for recreation. This slide summarizes the change in UPAR boundary acreages as a result of each alternative. Alternative B results in a net gain of 0.6 acres of UPAR land, and Alternative C results in a net gain of 6.4 acres of additional UPAR land. and alternative C results in a net gain of 6.4 acres of additional UPAR land. For the analysis of traffic congestion, travel patterns, traffic volumes, traffic operations, and parking supply were studied. Mobility at intersections is measured by calculating the average delay per vehicle and relating it to level of service benchmarks. Level of service letter designations A through F are correlated to quantitative measures based on the average seconds of delay per vehicle experienced at an intersection. A level of service A represents the best conditions and level of service F the worst. Alternative A considers the existing roadway network within Jackson Park and projects traffic volumes to the year 2040. Existing travel patterns and travel times are anticipated to remain largely the same as existing conditions. Traffic growth over this time is anticipated to increase approximately 2.4 percent concentrated on arterial roadways. Most intersections continue to operate satisfactorily. However, some intersections experience a degradation in level of service due to the growth in traffic volumes. As no changes to the roadway network occur under this alternative, there are no impacts to parking under alternative A. Alternative B considers a scenario where the OPC is constructed and the roadway closures are in place. Due to the closure of Cornell Drive, travel patterns and traffic volumes that remain within the study area are diverted to surrounding roadways, primarily Stony Island Avenue to the west and Lake Shore Drive to the east. Traffic patterns shift to the remaining roadway network during the morning and evening peak travel periods. As a result of the traffic diversions, the remaining roadway network experiences substantial congestion and delays. Thirteen intersections operate at unacceptable levels of service. Due to the roadway closures, 128 on-street parking spaces are lost. Additional off-street parking proposed as part of the OPC development is provided to accommodate anticipated parking demand from visitors to the center and its employees. Under alternative C, the FHWA may provide funding for roadway improvements to address congestion caused by the roadway closures. These improvements are concentrated along Stony Island Avenue, Lake Shore Drive, and Hayes Drive. Traffic volumes and travel patterns are dispersed among the improved roadways more evenly without overburdening one particular roadway. Alternative C would improve traffic congestion and travel times along all of the routes compared to alternative B. Traffic operations and delays are comparable or improved compared to existing conditions. The roadway improvements in alternative C result in an additional net loss of 21 on-street parking spaces. This impact topic focuses on the analysis of impacts on cultural resources under NEPA. An analysis under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, or NHPA, was conducted concurrently with but separately from the EA. This map shows the affected area of the project. The NEPA analysis's affected area for the EA is the same as the area of potential effects, or APE, and was determined in consultation with the Illinois State Historic Preservation Officer. Impacts of Alternative A. No direct or indirect impacts on cultural resources would occur under alternative A. As a result, no impacts to the characteristics of the historic properties that qualify them for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places, or NRHP, would occur. Impacts of Alternative B. Proposed UPAR replacement recreational improvements would result in impacts to the Midway Plaisance. The designed character of the sunken lawn would remain intact and historic features would be restored, including a north-south path and historic vegetation patterns. The new playground would be designed to be compatible with the existing character of the Midway Plaisance. The NHPA assessment of effects process concluded that the effects on the Midway Plaisance would not be adverse. Reconfiguring the women's garden and relocating the track and field along with removing roads and adding new pathways would alter historic circulation patterns. Historic view sheds would be altered by the OPC buildings. Designed topography and view sheds would be removed for the OPC site development. Though the assessment of effects concluded that there would be adverse effects, the historic properties would retain enough historic integrity to continue to qualify for NRHP listing. Mitigation is under development through a memorandum of agreement, or MOA, as part of the Section 106 process. Impacts of Alternative C. Alternative C would have additional direct impacts due to roadway improvements. Some contributing features would no longer remain in their historic locations. Specifically, the Hayes Drive-Richards Drive intersection would be moved. The historic triangular design of the intersection and its design emphasis on the Statue of the Republic would be removed. The designed character of Marquette Drive and Richards Drive would be altered by changes to the design and location of contributing historic features. Material features would be lost as a result of project implementation due to the removal of historic roadways. These alterations would diminish the evident historic workmanship of Olmsted's design by altering the spatial organization of Jackson Park and the historic property's feeling and aesthetic would be diminished. Though the assessment of effects concluded that there would be adverse effects, the historic properties would retain enough historic integrity to continue to qualify for NRHP listing. Mitigation is under development through an MOA as part of the Section 106 process. For the analysis of social and economic issues, the project study area includes portions of the neighborhoods of South Shore, Woodlawn, and Hyde Park. These neighborhoods are highly developed and include residential, commercial, recreational, transportation, and public and private institutional land uses. Population in the three neighborhoods in the project study area totals over 100,500 residents. Nearly half of the residents live in South Shore. Woodlawn and Hyde Park share the remaining number of residents with approximately 25,200 and 26,800 residents respectively. Population values for each neighborhood were established by combining data from individual census tracts within each neighborhood boundary. The labor force participation rates, which include persons in the labor force divided by population 16 years and older in each of the neighborhoods in the project study area, fall below those of the city of Chicago and the state of Illinois. Unemployment rates for the South Shore and Woodlawn neighborhoods for the 2013 to 2017 period were considerably higher than the city of Chicago and Illinois, while that of Hyde Park was below. Since no federal actions would occur under alternative A, there would be no direct or indirect social or economic impacts. Alternative B would include temporary impacts to the community such as an increase in short-term employment and public amenity improvements. Alternative C would include additional short-term employment opportunities from road improvement construction. This slide summarizes the overall social and economic impacts of the alternatives. There would be no impacts from alternative A because no federal action would be taken. Under both alternative B and alternative C, construction will lead to an increase in short-term employment. In the state of Illinois, over 6,000 short-term jobs are anticipated during the construction and startup phases of the OPC site development with an additional 2,700 long-term jobs during the operation phase of the OPC facilities. Alternative C would generate an additional 200 construction-related jobs for construction of roadway improvements. The Great Lakes Fishery and Ecosystem Restoration Project, or GLIFR, aims to create or enhance nearly 147 acres of native habitat within Jackson Park and along the Lake Michigan shoreline. The project includes 24 acres of new natural areas and the installation of over 600,000 native plants that will increase the biological diversity of Jackson Park and provide critical habitat and beautiful scenery for Jackson Park visitors. In addition, to improve access and circulation throughout Jackson Park, the project includes the installation of overlooks along the water's edge, new pathways, and the reconstruction of existing pathways on the wooded island. The areas included as part of the GLIFR project are shown on this slide. Alternative A represents the current conditions in Jackson Park. There is no change to GLIFR areas under alternative A. Under alternative B, permanent impacts will result from the construction of a new lift station by the Chicago Park District. Temporary fencing along the east side of Cornell Drive is proposed as part of this work and would result in temporary impacts. The Obama Foundation proposes to construct accessible pathway connections from the OPC site to the GLIFR pathways and replace the existing crushed stone screening-covered paths with concrete, resulting in temporary impacts to the GLIFR areas. A total of 78 square feet of permanent impacts and 0.23 acres of temporary impacts result from alternative B. Alternative C impacts are in addition to those observed in alternative B. Under alternative C, the widening of southbound Lake Shore Drive to the west would have additional permanent and temporary impacts to the restored GLIFR areas from grading and utility work. The proposed pedestrian underpasses near the intersections of Lake Shore Drive and Hayes Drive as well as Cornell Drive and Hayes Drive would also result in additional permanent and temporary impacts. An additional 1.32 acres of permanent impacts and 1.47 acres of temporary impacts result from implementing alternative C. All impacts to GLIFR areas would be restored or replaced within Jackson Park. Areas impacted temporarily by construction would be restored in place using the GLIFR planting pallet as a guide. Permanently impacted GLIFR areas would also be replaced on the east side of the Jackson Park Inner Harbor to the south of Hayes Drive, providing a net gain of 1.11 acres compared to the existing restoration area. Compliance with Other Laws. Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966, or NHPA, requires federal agencies to consider the effects on historic properties of projects they carry out, assist, fund, permit, license, or approve. If a federal or federally assisted project has the potential to affect historic properties, a Section 106 review is required. Additionally, Section 106 gives the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, interested parties, and the public the chance to weigh in on these matters before a final decision is made. Compliance with Section 106 is being conducted separately from but concurrently with this NEPA process. Section 4F of the U.S. Department of Transportation Act of 1966, known as Section 4F, considers uses of park and recreation lands, wildlife and waterfowl refuges, and historic sites during transportation project development. Historic sites are defined as prehistoric and historic districts, sites, buildings, structures, or objects listed in or eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. The law only applies to agencies within the U.S. Department of Transportation and is implemented by the FHWA and the Federal Transit Administration. A total of 41 properties are protected by Section 4F within the project area. Of these properties, four of the properties could not be avoided by the transportation project. Jackson Park and Midway Plaisance are considered as two separate recreation properties. As they are jointly listed on the National Register, the Jackson Park Historic Landscape District and Midway Plaisance is considered as one historic property. The Jackson Park Historic Landscape District and Midway Plaisance is a contributing feature of the Chicago Park Boulevard System Historic District. Thus, a use within Jackson Park equates to a use of the Chicago Park Boulevard System Historic District. The total use of Section 4F properties by the transportation project is 28.7 acres. Detailed descriptions of Section 4F properties and uses by the transportation project are documented in the draft Section 4F evaluation, which is available on the city's website. On April 22, 2020, the draft Section 4F evaluation was released to the officials with jurisdiction, or OWJs, and federal agencies with encumbrances on Section 4F land for a comment period that concluded on June 8, 2020. The draft Section 4F evaluation was also made available on the city's website for public review. FHWA will consider the comments received and complete the final Section 4F evaluation. The final Section 4F evaluation will be completed prior to or concurrent with the conclusion of FHWA's NEPA process. CDOT has requested a jurisdictional transfer of roadways from IDOT in response to the city's proposed roadway closures and resulting improvements to the roadway network. The following roadways will be transferred from IDOT to CDOT jurisdiction: 57th Drive from 57th Street to Lake Shore Drive, Cornell Drive from 67th Street to 57th Street, Stony Island Avenue from 69th Street to 65th Place, and Hyde Park Boulevard from 57th Street to 55th Street. Coordination of the jurisdictional transfer agreement is ongoing. Coordination is also ongoing between CDOT and the Chicago Park District regarding the vacation and dedication of public way in Jackson Park to accommodate the city's proposed increase in park space and roadway improvements to offset the roadway closures in Jackson Park. Next Steps. This slide summarizes the next steps in the NEPA process. The EA was released to the public for review on September 28, 2020, marking the beginning of a 30-day public review period. The public review comment period will end on October 30, 2020. Afterward, the federal agencies and the city will analyze the public comments received and provide responses to substantive comments. These will be addressed in a public comment analysis report, which will append the federal agency's NEPA determination. A substantive comment does one or more of the following: Questions with reasonable basis, the accuracy of information presented in the EA; Questions with reasonable basis, the adequacy of the environmental analysis; Presents reasonable alternatives other than those presented in the EA; And/or causes changes or revisions in the proposal. The NEPA process will continue as the agencies either make a determination of a finding of no significant impact, or Fonzie, or decide to proceed with an environmental impact statement. As mentioned in the previous slide, the official comment period for the environmental assessment began on September 28, 2020 and will conclude on October 30, 2020. There are a variety of methods through which comments may be provided. The preferred method of providing comments is online via the NPS Planning, Environment, and Public Comment website, or Pepsi website, The environmental assessment is available on this site for public viewing. You may also mail your comments to the Department of Planning and Development at the address listed on this slide. Considering the current state of public health safety and out of an abundance of caution, it is recommended that comments be submitted online, during a webinar, or by mail if possible. For those without access to the internet and for those unable to provide comments using these methods, an appointment to speak with a court reporter in person may be scheduled. A court reporter will be present for collecting comments at the South Shore Cultural Center on October 15, between 3:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. Social distancing and safety precautions consistent with city and state regulations will be enforced. Public comments will also be collected during each of the public hearing webinars for individuals who submitted speaking requests. The opportunity for public comments will follow this presentation. The preferred method of providing comments is online via the NPS Pepsi website. All comments received are treated equally regardless of the method through which they are submitted. Duplicate comments by the same individual will be disregarded. This concludes the presentation. The National Park Service, the Federal Highway Administration, the Illinois Department of Transportation, and the city of Chicago thank you for your time and input regarding this project. At this time, during each of the public hearing webinars, the opportunity for public comments will begin.
Thank you. If we could switch to the slide deck, Slide 16, please. Great. We'll get our timer set. Okay. At this time, we will begin the opportunity for providing public comments. As a reminder, when it is your turn to speak, the moderator will permit you to unmute your microphone. If participating on a computer, a screen prompt will allow you to unmute your microphone. If participating on the phone, a verbal prompt will ask you to press star six to unmute your phone. If viewing the webinar or live stream on a computer and calling in for audio features, please mute your computer while speaking to avoid an echo. The first participant is Ward Miller. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Ward Miller. I'm Executive Director-
I'm Executive Director of Preservation Chicago. As many of you know, Preservation Chicago welcomes the Obama Presidential Center to the city and to Chicago's south side. However, we continue to be opposed to the inappropriate placement of the nineteen-acre center comprised of a two-hundred-and-thirty-foot, or essentially a twenty-three-story office building, and several other ancillary buildings in a public park belonging to the people of Chicago for the past hundred-and-thirty years. This is also a very special site. Jackson Park is one of Frederick Law Olmsted and Olmsted and Voss's finest designs, and of course, co-joined with the Midway Placeance and Washington Park. This should not be destroyed, modified, or altered, and this plan really upsets everything. Jackson Park is also one of our prime lakefront parks bordering Lake Michigan and a true Chicago treasure. It's landmark eligible, it's listed on the National Register of Historic Places, which was done decades ago. Its preservation and restoration should be paramount and not squandered for development to a point where it would experience a death by a thousand cuts, as our DPD Commissioner Maurice Cox often cites. We really want to encourage the Obama Presidential Center to relocate to a series of other places where it would reduce the severe adverse effects and impact on Jackson Park and the surrounding areas. We feel this to be a less heavy-handed approach and really want to encourage this be moved to city and U of C, University of Chicago, own lands nearby, nine acres at Garfield Boulevard and Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. Thank you for your consideration of this request.
Thank you for your comment. Our second speaker is Mary Lou Seidel. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Mary Lou Seidel. I'm the Director of Community Engagement for Preservation Chicago. The Obama Presidential Center has been a contentious and yet still hopeful opportunity for the city of Chicago since the University of Chicago proposal for the center was chosen. This NEPA review needs to include a new environmental impact statement prepared to address specifically the environmental impact of this actual planned development based on two thousand and twenty awareness of the issues threatening our environment. While we have been accustomed to shortcuts through this federal review process, that we continue to call out those shortcuts and backroom, what appear to be backroom deals, we fervently pray that this NEPA review does not follow that same pattern. We have UPAR replacement park plans that defy reasonable definitions of what replacement park should look like. Converting a road into a park to green space counts. Improvements to an existing park count, that's some unusual math, and it diminishes the intent of the UPAR while also depriving the south side of Chicago with more parkland. An environmental assessment that excludes air quality, wildlife, and water resources for consideration. It feels kind of like we're in a haunting episode of The Twilight Zone instead of an objective, fair, and accountable federal review process. A thorough analysis of impacts in these areas should be included. We have significant traffic impacts that our partners at Jackson Park Watch have demonstrated are based on flawed assumptions and data. The wildlife areas, if seventeen percent of trees being removed in the impacted area does not qualify as significant. Everyone's heels appear to be dug in on this one issue, but we will benefit if the Obama Foundation would open up and consider alternatives to this. It tarnishes President Obama's legacy when it appears laws, rules, and processes are manipulated for development that benefits him, whether in Hawaii or in Chicago. The federal process has the power to defend against negative environmental impacts. Time will tell whether it is willing to do that or whether we will again face a process with a predetermined outcome that poses an objective review, as poses as an objective review of this project's impact on the environment. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Our third speaker is Al DeBonnet. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Fantastic. I imagine you guys can hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. My name is Al DeBonnet. I'm the Chair of the Jackson Park Golf and Community Leadership Council, twenty-year resident, and also I'm a former United States Department of Commerce statistician and U of C researcher. I also help young kids, developmentally challenged, in the area of Chicago and throughout Jackson Park. So, with that said, I was appointed by the Alderman as a result of the ask from the community to have a voice in the restoration of the Jackson Park golf course in a harmonious, I'd say, representation and development with the OPC. I've attended more meetings than anyone besides the Alderman, over a hundred and twenty, and we represent thousands of community stakeholders that are including the harbor boaters, the, all the patrons on the site of Jackson Park, including golfers, runners, soccer players, and all those that use the park and its area. So I'm going to cite some statistics, since I am that financial and statistical guy. There will be anywhere from one hundred to two hundred million dollars in additional economic impact because of the OPC's development and restoration of the Jackson Park golf course. There will be a hundred permanent jobs and caddy jobs in the Jackson Park area because of the OPC's presence. There will be three to five million dollars in additional annual charitable contributions to area, the not-for-profits, hospitals, and schools. And there'll be over five million dollars in Evan scholarships because of the restoration of golf course and its restoration and harmonious development with the OPC. Let us help people besides birds, bees, butterflies, and botany. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for your comment. Our fourth speaker is Elizabeth Gardner. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
My name is Elizabeth Gardner, a seventeen-year resident of the Woodlawn Community, board member of the Southeast Chicago Commission, the Emerald South Economic Development Collaborative, and co-founder of the Woodlawn Community Summit, a resident-led initiative entering its twelfth year. On behalf of the Woodlawn Community Summit Advisory Committee, we are pleased to provide our support for the Obama Presidential Center to be placed in historic Jackson Park located on the south side of Chicago. We know the OPC will be excellent stewards of the land while honoring the history of this beloved park. They have been steadfast in honoring the history of Jackson Park while making the necessary improvements for all citizens and visitors to enjoy. The Obama Foundation will also be a catalyst for economic growth for the residents of Chicago. During these unprecedented times in our nation's history, including COVID-19, civil unrest, and the largest unemployment of our citizens, it is more prevalent than ever that we, the people, provide opportunities for local businesses, including minority and women-owned firms located on the south side. Because of the OPC, a much-needed grocery store was built, including planned improvements to Sixty-third and Cottage Grove. Minority-owned businesses are being solicited to take part in the projects, as well as the opportunity for residents to become employed while making a living wage. We wholeheartedly and enthusiastically agree with the OPC and the Obama Foundation that all proposals submitted on behalf of the OPC should be approved for this project to begin to build and transform Jackson Park and the Woodlawn community. This is a historic moment for our community, our city, our country, and our legacy. The studies are completed, they have done excellent development plans. Please approve this project without delay. We urge you to allow the Obama Presidential Center to begin its work in improving our neighborhoods and to transform the world's understanding and appreciation of the city of Chicago and its people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our fifth speaker is Gary Osaward. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
My name is Gary Osaward. I'm an officer in the Jackson Park Advisory Council, though I speak for myself, and, but most of our council agrees that the benefits of the coming OPC and the other improvements in the park will be tremendous gains for our neighborhoods, for the messaging of the park to bring it up-to-date, in sync with the communities, and in sync with what we have understanding of our country now, while retaining the basic patterns, reinterpreting the patterns developed by Olmsted. I think the environmental study was thorough, and it began more than three years ago, and it basically found that with some additional changes made, the original plan knew what was expected and thought ahead to make sure that things were balanced out, including with traffic, and that we got more forward-looking environment than we have had in the past, and that we reconnect the park and make it a much better place for bicyclists and children and pedestrian, as it has been before, for much safer and much more connected while retaining the path, the patterns developed by Olmsted. And so I support the coming of OPC and the other changes and hope that will lead to further improvements and historic restorations as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our sixth speaker is Karen Freeman-Wilson. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Good evening. My name is Karen Freeman-Wilson, and I'm the President and CEO for the Chicago Urban League. We are here in support of the plan as laid out today and as we hope will be implemented going forward. For over one hundred years, the Chicago Urban League has fought for racial equality and economic justice for Black families. We do that by providing programs, by providing research and policy, and by being a convener. In those capacities, we have seen firsthand the impact of the wealth gap on our community. We are in supportive of the plan as articulated because we understand, as has been laid out in the creation of jobs, in the creation of economic development, the opportunity that this presents for our community, for our community to grow, for our community to see development, for our community to see investment, and that is real investment as evidenced by the center. Over the last six months, we have been hit hard by a city and nation by the dual pandemic of COVID-19 and structural racism that has impacted our communities for too long. If we, in fact, want to see and create real change, then we have to make real investments in our community. This center represents a real investment, and while we are not close to the understanding of the impact of the historic changes, we also understand that there is a benefit that far outweighs the changes.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Kenarit Jaffee. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
My name is Kenarit Jaffee, and I have lived in Hyde Park for the last thirty-three years. At the outset, let me state that I believe this environmental assessment is very thorough and that alternative C should be adopted without delay. I concluded this after reading every page of the assessment, but more importantly, after evaluating the alternative is based on my weekly walks in Jackson Park and my participation on the Jackson Park Advisory Council, the Midway Placeance Advisory Council, and as a board member of the Hyde Park Art Center. While I am not speaking on behalf of either of the two park advisory councils, JPAC has adopted a resolution supporting the EA. Further, the art center is a consulting party in the Section one-oh-six process and is prepared to sign off on the MOA as presented in July. I want to thank the NPS and the FHWA for the work that went into developing alternative C, which will bring so many benefits to Jackson Park and the surrounding communities. The recreational benefit of the proposed UPAR replacement is enormous. It is currently not possible for children to play or others to walk in this area during much of the year. Although it is always referred to as a wetland on current maps, it is really a swamp filled with goose poop. The proposed five-point-two-acre site will actually be larger than the current four-point-six-acre UPAR area. There are enormous transportation and traffic benefits with the proposed roadway improvements. Currently, much of Cornell Drive lacks pedestrian crossings, and even where crossings exist, there is a real threat of accidents with cars speeding on a six-lane highway. Chicago residents chained themselves to trees to protest the construction of Cornell. I look forward to planting trees once this highway is removed. Finally, the building of the OPC itself will bring significant cultural resources. As with the other museums in the park in Chicago, the center will provide educational resources for visitors to learn about the Obamas and the historic nature of his presidency. The gardens, the lawns, the newly planted trees, which enhance our beloved park. The adverse effects are small in proportion to the overall size of the historic resources and are consistent with the many developments that have altered this park throughout its history. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is James Walton Jr. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Hello. My name is James M. Walton Jr. My friends and neighbors call me Jim. I am the proud president of the Kenwood Block Point, the Kenwood Point Block Club. My wife Cheryl and I have lived in Woodlawn for eighteen years, and I have been a southside resident since nineteen sixty-nine. On behalf of my fellow neighbors of the block club, we collectively express our enthusiasm and support for the Obama Presidential Center on the selected Jackson Park site on Chicago's south side. The south side is where President and Mrs. Obama's home is, it's where our homes are, and it is fitting for the OPC to call the south side home as well. As homeowners and Woodlawn residents, we are excited to have the OPC in Jackson Park as the Obama Foundation had requested. We are grateful to the foundation for amazing efforts to communicate with us and include our voices every step along the way. This endeavor enjoys enormous support, and we are ready to continue to be supportive partners of the foundation throughout the entire process to ensure the building of the OPC in our community. The OPC represents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the south side and the community of Woodlawn in particular, with the creation of nearly five thousand jobs during the construction phase and six hundred million-plus dollars in economic activity during construction. At its completion, over twenty-five-hundred permanent jobs will be created when the center is open to the public at the potential of nearly two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars in annual income for our community. As an underserved and economically depressed neighborhood since the nineteen-sixties, Woodlawn deserves the phenomenal opportunity to prosper, redefine, and emerge as one of the best communities in Chicago. For us, bringing the OPC to the south side is personal. For the youth living in our community, it will be a continuing wellspring of inspiration for you generations to come. We are committed to doing and contributing and supporting any way we can to bring the OPC to full fruition in Woodlawn and Jackson Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ross Peterson. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Hello. This is Ross Peterson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm with the Group Protect Our Parks. I'm concerned because there's no consultation with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and I'm concerned about migratory bird flights through the flyway through that park. You're building a two-hundred-and-thirty-five-foot-tall building directly adjacent to what is a very sensitive migratory flyway. I have concerns about the trees that will be taken down. Everybody talks about they're going to be replacing them one for one. The problem is, is that you're taking down trees that have three feet in diameter. They're over a hundred feet high, and what's going to get replaced? A three-inch diameter at breast height, a three-inch sapling. The immediate effect on canopy is very difficult to assess because we don't have a census of all the trees in the parks. We don't know what percentage of trees, the four hundred that will come down from the OPC site, the roughly additional four hundred that will come down in the road widening, we really don't know what the effect that's going to have on our canopy. There's no mention of the impact in terms of the necessary connection between people and nature. in terms of the necessary connection between people and nature. We're taking away nature and putting in a high rise building. And to me, this is just stunning. This is a federally historic registered listed park designed by Olmsted. And we're talking about putting up a 235 foot tall mid-rise building, several other lower buildings, and a 20 acre concrete plaza. It is going to completely change Jackson Park as we know it. That concludes my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Gian Foreman. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
My name is Gian Foreman and I serve as the president and CEO of the Emerald South Economic Development Collaborative. And I speak in support of the Obama Presidential Center being built in Jackson Park and specifically alternative C, which will provide the obvious benefits listed in the environmental assessment. Those benefits include the much needed road improvements, new and improved park and recreation space, improved access to Jackson Park land, and natural ecosystem restoration. But in my view, all of these benefits pale in comparison to the once in a generation positive impact the Obama Presidential Center and the related improvements will have on the restoration of the community ecosystem. The communities that surround the future Obama Presidential Center are communities rich in history, community organizations, religious and education institutions, commerce, people, and boundless opportunities. But they've seen decades of systemic disinvestment. The Obama Presidential Center is providing the community a once in a lifetime opportunity to come together as a unit to generate community wealth and preserve and amplify local culture through shared pride, power, and investment. The obvious benefit of jobs created during and post-construction of the Presidential Center are important. But equally important will be the jobs created within the surrounding communities as a result of the new visitors entering our communities. The Presidential Center, University of Chicago, and the cultural institutions will bring over 2 million visitors to the community. We are operating with the philosophy of Ubuntu. I am because you are. That's our approach. The O P C brings with it the hopes and dreams of many generations, not only in Chicago but around the world. With it, the hopes and we are creating a new model for how black communities grow and thrive by collective action of community government, community anchors, both nonprofit and for profit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is David Whitaker. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Good evening. I just want to make sure my voice is being heard.
Yes.
Great, thank you. My name is David Whitaker. I have the privilege of being the president and CEO of Choose Chicago, our local tourism and convention sales organization. With our collective efforts, with our hospitality and tourism and conventions industry, we routinely, as you know, welcome over 55, almost 60 million visitors to our city. Cities have to constantly reinvent themselves. And my colleagues earlier in this call have talked about the transformative nature of this project and what it'll mean for our community, for our residents, for the park itself. But most importantly, in my space, a tremendous opportunity for the economic impact of a growing tourism economy. Tourism is one of our largest employers in the city, employing people from entire, all over our community. And it's and the greater, the McCormick Place Convention Center just down the way is going to be an important conduit to this economic development. We host almost 70 major conventions a year. I can't begin to tell you the reaction we've been hearing from meeting planners who are interested in involving their, whether it's their opening reception, a tour, a private event, educational content with the foundation itself. So this is going to be a tremendous catalyst for us to grow what already is one of our largest industries, but have it grow and survive in a very competitive time. Speaking of the time we're in, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the national narrative. We're all unfortunately familiar with it. But quite frankly, this is a blessing for a path forward as we all look at addressing some of the systemic inequity. And this is a, this is germane to the tourism space. Visitors want to know that they're having a positive impact in communities they visit. And the very nature of this project, the impact that you're hearing from all of the colleagues before me, this will be transformative. It will clearly be a path forward for Chicago's entire tourism and hospitality industry and the jobs and economic engine it creates. And my friend Gian was probably underestimating 2 million. There will be millions of additional visitors spending money in this neighborhood and community. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Tina Hendricks. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So yes, I'm Tina Hendricks and I live in South Shore. I've lived in South Shore for over 20 years. I work with Woodlawn and South Shore Youth. I work as a youth organizer, youth organizer and a youth advocate for over 20 years. I've recently worked with the youth from these areas on a youth civic media project designed to give them a voice and to document that voice through all media platforms. I've been working with the black entertainment television networks, B T, and their executive vice president, Canar Gibbs. Our youth need this space. Our youth need the Obama Center space. It's important that youth from the community have a sense of responsibility to the success of the Obama Center. I'm pleased that the Obama Foundation has promised to allow youth to express themselves and for them to convey the messages that they that they actually have and that will ground them within that space. The Obama Center and the special programming to be put in place will accommodate youth and the support that the youth need for opportunities to develop their physical, social, and emotional abilities and also provide opportunities to experience achievement, leadership, enjoyment, friendship, and recognition. Keeping the center open on the weekends will also help young people have a safer place to be rather than on the streets. The programs will engage youth in intentional, productive, and constructive ways while recognizing and enhancing their strengths. These programs will promote positive outcomes by providing opportunities, fostering positive relationships, and giving youth support that is needed to develop young people's assets and prevent risky behavior. So yes, it is needed and our young people need that space to actually be able to feel a part and enhance the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Lauren Simmons. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Simmons. Thank you for this opportunity. Today I joined this meeting representing the Simmons Hillman family with over 100 years of residency and service on Chicago's South Side in my employer, Y W C A Metropolitan Chicago, where I serve as the Chief Empowerment Officer. As a longstanding South Side resident, the Y W C A and I strongly support the placement of the Barack Obama Presidential Center in Jackson Park under alternative A, I'm sorry, alternative B or C. This resource would not only enhance my community and the work of the Y W C A, but will also be a catalyst of impact to communities everywhere. For over 140 years, the Y W C A Metropolitan Chicago has been committed to serving the needs of women and girls. The Y W C A's mission is to eliminate racism and empower women is actualized through a large breadth of programs and services, which are conducted through several sites located throughout Chicago, including our Parks Frances Center, located within walking distance of Jackson Park. Through its, through our core programmatic areas of safety and wellness, education and training, and economic sustainability, the Y W C A provides women with access to the support, tools, and opportunities they need to transform their lives and make valuable contributions to their communities. Alternative B or C will accelerate and amplify the economic development work occurring on Chicago's South Side. These options will help to create construction jobs and new businesses. It will bring additional education, training, and apprenticeship opportunities. Moreover, these options will drive community stabilization and growth by positioning the center on Chicago Park District Plan. This allows communities to remain intact, preventing the displacement and separation of residents from these historic neighborhoods. This is why my employer and I strongly support alternative B or C to building the Presidential Center in Jackson Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mary Anton. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Great. My name's Mary Anton. I am born and raised South Sider who's lived in Hyde Park for 50 years and I'm within a block radius of the site for the Obama Presidential Center. I've been involved as a consulting partner, partner, and also as an advocate for the project since 2017. And I strongly am committed to seeing the Obama Center in Jackson Park under the alternative C. Several people have talked about the historic nature of this project and I would, I would completely agree with that. In fact, I would agree that it's probably the most historic event to happen here on the South Side since the Colombian exposition in 1893. Frederick Law Olmsted was basically brought in to design the Chicago Park System on the South Side. And then he was brought back to design the landscaping for the Colombian exposition. And then he was brought back a third time in order to convert the park to something like its its present purposes. I don't think Frederick Olmsted, as if you will, would have much qualms in terms of converting the site again. I see this as an incredible economic and social boon for the South Side of the city, having the same kind of effect that the Colombian exposition had so many years ago on the, on the growth and and the relevance of Chicago. One final thing I would like to say, having been involved in the process for so long, a period of time, I really want to thank all of the city and state and federal individuals who have been involved in this process. You've stayed with us through a long workload. You've done a thorough investigation and a great analysis. And I do, I truly appreciate and hope that you will be as proud of what your, your process has managed to do as we are, will be proud to have it.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Brian Starr. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Good evening. I'm Brian Starr with the Y W C A Metropolitan Chicago. And the Y W C A Metropolitan Chicago is strongly in support of the creation of the Obama Presidential Center in Jackson Park. Y W C A Metropolitan Chicago has had a long, strong relationship in the Woodlawn community. Our former facility is now the Harris Park on Drexel Avenue in Chicago. It's Woodlawn Community. As the Director of Inspired Engagement for the Y W C A Metropolitan Chicago, I know the significant impact that economic opportunities can have for women, their families, and their community. The Obama Presidential Center will provide that. On a personal note, I'm a native of the South Side and a resident of Hyde Park. I applaud the foundation and the planning council for being so thoughtful in their approach to pedestrian access to the park. Currently, the park is very difficult to use as you have to navigate across a six lane highway with only periodic breaks with a stoplight. This presents quite a danger for pedestrians. I'm an avid cyclist, so it's quite dangerous to cycle there. Frederick Law Olmsted saw parks as a bastion of the democratic ideals of community and equality. Olmsted believed that in a democratic society, people regardless of socioeconomic standing should sense that they belong to a community. Placing the Obama Presidential Center in Chicago Jackson Park will allow generations of families to, maybe for the first time, feel that they are valued and part of a community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Diane Lattaker. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Hello?
We can hear you.
My name is Diane Lattaker. I'm the founding president of Kids Off the Block in the Roseland Community. First, let me say thank you to the Obama Foundation for the resources and support of our young people that we serve. I strongly want this, this Presidential Center built because I feel the young people deserve it. I feel the young people of Chicago need somewhere to be proud, a place that they can see with their own eyes and have hope in for their future. I just want young people to know that we care and we care. And when we build these places, it's because we care about them. That everything doesn't have to be political or that it doesn't have to be about money, but about them and their future and and what they can become. And this, this building, this Presidential Library will do just that to me. And so I advocated for it. I can't wait to see it go up and I can't wait to see young people when they enter this place, this place that gives them so much hope because they deserve it. And because all of us that work with young people and know that at this time, at this moment, this is what they need. Actually, this is what we all need. But because of our children, our teenagers, and our young adults, they've been out here and I have not seen anything that represents them or thought about them. So that's why I'm advocating for the Obama Presidential Center. And I hope that everybody else will look at this building and see what I see. A place for young people to be safe, for them to learn, for them to grow, and for them to remember their future is thought about by adults. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Greg Mooney. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes, you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, I serve as the Board President of the Comer Education Campus and have lived and worked in the Chicago's Fifth Ward for more than 20 years. The Comer Education Campus and I have been part of the public process from the get go. And in addition, I have participated in numerous public planning processes and city hearings over the years. And and I have to say, I really think you'd be hard pressed to identify a process that has been as thorough and as tramp and as transparent as the Obama Presidential Center. It's really been impressive. The number of people, stakeholders, community groups, residents at all levels that have been engaged throughout this really thoughtful and comprehensive process. I have to say that I really appreciate the thorough nature of the federal review process. Comer as an organization fully supports and enthusiastically supports the Obama Presidential Center and is excited about the alternatives put forth in B and C and see them as real tremendous enhancements to the incredible Jackson Park. They'll set this Chicago gem on an international, international stage while activating portions of the park that have tremendous capacity for greater utilization and natural beauty. As a, as someone who lived directly across, for example, the east portion of the Midway Plaza, I can personally attest to the fact that, that that's an area that has really suffered from drainage issues. And I see the enhancements as, as really benefiting the community on so many levels and benefiting our young people, most especially who are inspired by this incredible vision and commitment of the Obama Presidential Center. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Linda Rhodes. Please follow the instructions for unmuting your microphone.
Thank you. My name is Linda Rhodes and I support the Barack Obama Presidential Center on the South Side of Chicago. I'm excited about people of all walks of life all over the world being able to enjoy this center. But as a resident of the South Side of Chicago for 31 years, the wife of someone who has lived on the South Side of Chicago for all of his 59 years, as someone who's raised our two children on the South Side and as someone who's mentored youth in this area for many years, I'm especially excited about this experience being more accessible to the South Side community than if it was positioned anywhere else. Having the campus Having the campus just south of the Museum of Science and Industry, my favorite museum, and where I've worked, I used to work, and adjacent to Lake Michigan will create more connectivity in the area and a place of life and vibrancy for our visitors and South Side neighbors. With its design, the Obama Foundation will reinvest in the park, establish connectivity with the lake, and create a contiguous space for children to safely run and play. The parkland will be preserved, and most of the center campus will be free, open, and welcoming spaces for the community. As a longtime environmental health and safety professional, I am also very excited about all of the ecological improvements that are proposed for the center. There are simply not enough spaces for our young people on the South Side to learn their rich histories, let alone to build strong networks or to reach their full potentials and be inspired to make beautiful contributions to the world. I'm sitting right now across from my daughter, who is 26 years old, and she had many opportunities to expand her world. But unfortunately, there are a lot of folks who don't have that luxury, and we really need to think about that population and make sure that we have centers such as this accessible to them so that they can do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All registered speakers who are present have now participated. Next slide. Thank you for your participation and input in this public hearing webinar. As a reminder, the environmental assessment is available for public viewing and comment on the NPS Pepsi website through October 30th. Public hearing materials, including the public hearing presentation, are posted on the city's website. Next slide. This concludes the public hearing webinar. Again, thank you for your time and participation.